Please remain standing for the motion.
As per the legislation, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This time I would entertain a motion dispensing with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting. It's written and recorded in the official minute book of the township.
I'll make that motion.
The motion, we have a second. Questions or comments? All favorably signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. We record a six-zero vote. Uh, we are expecting Commissioner Cobb at some point. Uh, other than that, uh, we are all here and ready to go. Uh, just a couple announcements. Um, Board of Commissioners conducted an executive session as part of its March tenth, twenty twenty-five workshop meeting to discuss two personnel matters and one subject of litigation. And at this time, um, what you're all here for, uh, we are hosting a commendation ceremony to recognize members of the police department who have demonstrated exemplary initiative or ability as part of their police duties that contributed to the safety of the Springfield Township community. At this time, I would like to invite Chief Michael Pico to the front of the room.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners, and, uh, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. So once again, it's my pleasure to preside over this year's, uh, commendation ceremony, offer congratulations on our number of our fine officers. There are six awards tonight, like the, you know, a brand of applause for all the officers. They might not receive an award, but they're doing a great job, so. So as you know, as internally, we recognize excellent service by our officers, but it's much better to have this recognition in a public setting as tonight. Uh, I have some forty years in law enforcement and continue to be proud of one of the most noble professions one could have. I'm certain my fellow officers here this evening feel the same way, and we are honored to serve a great community. Community policing is a term that we've all heard for many years now. Believe it or not, it goes back to the eighteen hundreds. Sir Robert Peel, some of you younger guys might remember that from the academy, uh, the father of modern policing, moving ahead to nineteen seventies, nineteen eighties. Um, policing got away from the reactive policing to proactive policing and trust building with our residents. And I believe that we do a fantastic job with the residents, uh, and the business owners in Springfield Township. You're gonna hear, uh, again, six, uh, five cases, one other award, but this evening, three cases that we're going to give awards out for are from, uh, very proactive policing. One is another sad case where the officers, uh, officer and detective from Norristown, the municipality, the municipality of Norristown, can't call it borough, I know that. Can't do that. Uh, was a very sad, but showing a lot of empathy for the, uh, the victims of the crime, and we have one life-saving emergency. Uh, in our township, we typically receive a lot of traffic complaints. Traffic complaints about speeding. We do a lot of traffic studies that determine whether it's fanned or not. We do a lot of enforcement efforts. However, crimes with firearms are becoming, uh, more of a problem in Montgomery County. And as you're gonna hear tonight, we have some firearms crimes where we've made arrests for. I'd like to thank the families of the officers that are here this evening, and, uh, we're gonna do our best to make sure that they're safe at all times. And we have a policy in place whereby, how did we get here tonight? We have nominations for the awards, accommodations. Um, supervisors typically do that, but an officer can also nominate one of the supervisors for an award. Now Lieutenant Mersky and I, we, we review the, the awards that come in, or the requests for commendations, and then we, we make the decision on, uh, who's going to move forward with that. So let me go with the first one. The first one is, uh, a unit citation. Now, that Sergeant Balado could not be here tonight, but we also have Corporal Wiley, Officer Donnelly, Officer Lopez, Officer Seltzer, Officer Towser, and Detective Craig. And here's what a unit citation is. Uh, exceptional police service where the outstanding accomplishment is a result of teamwork rather than that of the individual. So if those officers want to step forward, and I'll read you a little bit about, uh, the incident question. Uh, this actually goes back to two thousand, two thousand twenty-three, but we, we kind of deferred it to the two thousand twenty-four awards because it's a pretty complex case. So eleven-two-twenty-three at two sixteen, uh, PM, Officer Donnelly was parked on the driveway apron of the Wimbor Hose Company Number One, located on Walgrove Avenue. Corporal Wiley radioed to Officer Donnelly that, uh, there was a vehicle adventurous traveling in his direction, maybe involved in an ongoing drug and gun investigation in and around Springfield Township. The vehicle in question had heavily tinted windows, traveling eastbound of Walgrove Avenue, was, and was stopped by Officer Donnelly in the thirteen-hundred block of Churchill Road nearby. The driver, uh, and passenger side windows were rolled down, and there was the odor of marijuana emanating from the, uh, vehicle. When the rear windows were, uh, lowered, the, uh, the odor got even stronger. Uh, other officers arrived on location, additional officers, again, Sergeant Balado, Officer Lopez, Seltzer, Towser, and Detective Craig. Officer Donnelly, uh, read the consent to search form to the driver, who willingly signed the form, supported by body-worn camera footage. A male passenger appealed, appeared rather extremely nervous, very argumentative with police. The male was arrested for possession of drug paraphernalia, the glove box was locked, and the officers applied for a search warrant of that glove box. Once the, uh, warrant was approved by the Magisterial District Judge, glove box was searched, and it contained a black Glock style polymer eighty firearm without a serial number. In other words, it's a ghost gun. Uh, the, the gun in question had one, uh, round, nine-millimeter round in the chamber and thirteen rounds in the magazine. This male was, uh, additionally charged with felonies to include dealing in proceeds of unlawful activities, firearm not to be carried without a license, possession of a firearm by a minor, transported to the Montgomery County Youth Center. The arrest was a culmination of good intelligence and teamwork by the officers, resulting in illegally possessed ghost gun being taken off the streets in the community. Your actions are in the highest traditions of Springfield Township. Thank you. Look at that. All right. And these awards, uh, this type of award has a ribbon, a medal that can be worn on the officer's uniform. All right. Next up will be Officer Mikowski. Another fine, uh, act of policing. The accommodation of merit is for an act of intelligent and valuable police service demonstrating faithfulness or perseverance, including an especially important arrest accomplished through highly intelligent police performance. Okay, Tuesday, February twentieth, two thousand twenty-four, around eleven-thirty-four PM, Officer Brian Mikowski initiated a car stop on a beige Cadillac for driving without illuminating rear taillights on Papernbaum Road near Preston Road, located in the Erdenheim section of Springfield Township. The driver and passenger were not wearing seatbelts. Through Officer Mikowski's training and experience, he was able to detect signs of nervousness, verbal and nonverbal cues of deception. Officer Mikowski requested consent to search the vehicle, which was granted, like the last case, supported by a completed consent form and body-worn camera footage. Search of the vehicle yielded one hundred grams of methamphetamine, five-point-seven grams of psilocybin, commonly known as magic mushrooms, five-point-three grams of cocaine, four units of Xanax, eleven units of Adderall, one liquid vial of PCP, a large amount of currency and drug paraphernalia, and apparent ledgers associated with drug dealing. Both the driver and passenger were charged with felonies to include multiple counts of possession with the intent to deliver, dealing in proceeds of unlawful activities, and possession of a controlled substance. The male had been on federal parole for narcotics, which expired one week prior to his traffic stop in Springfield Township. Officer Mikowski utilized his training and experience to arrest two individuals who were attempting to distribute a substantial amount of illegal narcotics in the community and elsewhere. Your actions are in the highest tradition of Springfield Township. Right, ladies? All right. Next up is Officer Donnelly and Officer Lopez again. This will be the accommodation of merit, which we just described for Officer Mikowski. Another fine, uh, work by, by officers. June twenty-fourth, it's a Monday around twelve AM, Officer Donnelly was traveling northbound on Befflin Pike near Crescent Valley Road. The Wimbor section of Springfield Township observed a black Chrysler Albu displaying a Delaware temporary paper license plate determined to be counterfeit. While investigating further, a strong odor of marijuana was detected, and the windows were heavily tinted. Corporal Wiley, uh, Lopez also, where's Wiley at? Okay. Uh, Lopez assisted with the investigation. The driver identified himself and claimed that he didn't have any paperwork for the vehicle. Uh, there were six passengers in the vehicle, and three of the seven occupants were identified. The driver was asked for consent to search the vehicle, which was subsequently denied. All the occupants were patted down for possible weapons, and after finding none, they were free to leave. The vehicle was impaneant. The police department secured Sallyport. A search warrant was applied and approved by the Magisterial District Judge. In the rear passenger side seat was a backpack that contained a loaded AR-15-style pistol without serial numbers nor markings. Under the front passenger seat, a tan-framed Glock-style handgun was observed and identified as an eighty-percent arms, uh, Glock Model Twenty-Sixth with a black slide. There was no serial number, of course, or identifying markings. Uh, another ghost gun. So it was loaded with one nine-millimeter round in the chamber, twelve rounds in the magazine. Arrest warrants were issued for the adult and a juvenile for firearm, firearms not to be carried without a license, and possession of a firearm by a minor. They were both taken into custody at a later date. Again, two illegally possessed ghost firearms were taken off the streets in our community. Your actions again are in the highest traditions of Springfield Township Police Department. Let me look at my, I'll, I'll look at my file here. Get your, get your ribbons.
I think it's a quarter of an O T A R pistol, and that was also modified to be fully elemented.
Was it? Okay.
Or at least two or three rounds worth, right?
Okay. Okay, shop it.
Thank you.
All right, Officer Johnson. I need a bigger lectern is what I need. Uh, here we go. Okay, the life-saving award. Make sure I read it officially here, Pat. Shall be awarded to the member who acted in a manner that saved the life of another human being, whether by verbal communication or a physical act. So this, uh, worked out well for the, uh, the patient, but this is Thursday, Independence Day, July fourth, two thousand twenty-four, five-twenty in the afternoon. Officer Patrick Johnson was dispatched to the one-hundred block of Yaco Avenue, located in the Erdenheim section of Springfield Township for a medical emergency involving a laceration. Officer Johnson located the patient, who was completely covered in blood, clutching his right arm and the blood-soaked towel that was actively pouring blood from the wound. The patient had been working on a home and unfortunately used a ladder, I'm sorry, used a window, rather, to brace his fall from a ladder. Officer Johnson asked county dispatch to expedite the ambulance squad, uh, and apply the tourniquet at five-twenty-four PM, so about four minutes after the call was dispatched. Meanwhile, the ambulance, uh, gave an ETA or arrival, estimated time of arrival of six minutes away. The bleeding appeared to be from an artery wound, which obviously can lead to massive blood loss fairly quickly. Officer Johnson applied a tourniquet successfully and stopped the bleeding, and the ambulance squad, uh, arrived soon thereafter to take the patient for treatment and transport him to the hospital. Officer Johnson's training from his years in the police department and his service with the United States Army, uh, now Army Reserve, uh, were invaluable for the patient's survival. Your actions are in the highest tradition of Springfield Township Police Department. All right, now we have, uh, Officer, uh, Matt Towser and Norristown Police Detective Garrett? Did I pronounce that right? All right, this is that sad case I was telling you about, where again, a lot of, a lot of empathy, empathy showed by Officer Towser and Detective from Norristown. So it's, uh, it occurred on Tuesday, September third, two thousand twenty-four, about one-fifty in the afternoon. Police received a report that a student with a severe intellectual disability attending our Fairwood Academy, which is the Orlean or Fort Washington section of Springfield Township, uh, was banging her head on the wall out of frustration and believed that the student needed to be treated at a hospital due to red marks on her head. She actually has a younger brother as well with an intellectual disability who also attends Fairwood Academy. Officer Towser began his investigation, and between September eleventh and September seventeenth, he conducted extensive witness interviews, uh, and it was suspected that the two siblings were living in very poor conditions and not receiving the appropriate care. On nine-seventeen-twenty-four, Officer Towser notified the Norristown Police Department and spoke with detectives, right? And you were assigned to, uh, to assist with that because the parents, the suspects in this crime, live in the municipality of Norristown. Springfield Township Police Department provided Norristown Police Department with, uh, interview, uh, videos and numerous reports of the suspects slash parents involved from two additional police departments in Delaware County. Calls coming in where the, the children are wandering around aimlessly in the neighborhood, uh, with poor weather conditions and the house in, in, in bad shape. Uh, Detective, uh, Gerard filed several felony charges, abuse of a care-dependent person, and endangering the welfare of children against both parents, with the assistance of the county's Office of Children and Youth and Adult Protective Services. As a result of their, their determined, their diligent, thorough, and empathetic investigation, and with the assistance of the county agencies, the siblings were removed from their custody of the parents and are now receiving proper care at other facilities. And I'd just like to add, there's a lot of times where we, we run from call to call. It would not be uncommon on some cases to these children get to the hospital, and then we're out of it, and the county takes over. But Matt, I know you were pretty persistent with your reporting on this, and again, working together in tandem with Norristown. Great job by, by both of you. And again, your actions are in the highest tradition of our Springfield Township Police Department. And last but not least, we have the Highway Safety Award. Officer Edward Gross, second year in a row. So the Highway Safety Award says, uh, Sergeant sort to review year-end records and nominate one officer. The nomination should include the officer's activity for the year to include DUI arrest, hazardous moving violation citations, overall citations and warnings, parking enforcement, traffic recommendations, and any traffic crash training attended within the year. And that's one of the key parts in this case with the training, because, I mean, our department now has, I guess we have five crash reconstructions, including me. I know I was having some nightmares for the training. You might have experienced as well. But the Highway Safety Award, I told you what it's all about. Uh, Officer Gross has attended previously Fundamentals of On-S scene Crash Investigation in October of two thousand eighteen, Basic On-S scene Crash Investigation, April two thousand twenty-one, Advanced and Technical Analysis Collision Investigation, June of two thousand twenty-three, and last but not least, the Crash Reconstruction Training, two-week session, September of two thousand twenty-four. So the two thousand twenty-four Highway Safety Award goes to Officer Gross. All right. Thanks again for everybody coming. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, too. Uh, would you be open to, uh, a group photo?
Absolutely.
And then maybe if, if anyone wants to take photos with, with family individual, they could take some time to do that.
That's dope.
Come on up for a group photo if you're willing.
I'll go first.
Should we go down?
We'll gather.
You can go down.
Okay. No, Jack, my son's. Yeah. Yeah. Mike said.
There you go. Daddy.
Hi. How are you?
Very good. Very good.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
What am I supposed to be doing?
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Good work today. You know what? Whatever you're doing, keep it on. Looks good on you.
Are we ready to get going? Is our video back on, Greg? All right, great. All right, we're back just from a, a loud folks to take pictures and click the room. Get going, and we are now open to comments or questions from the public. The board draws particular attention to those items listed on the agenda this evening. Please be advised that once the committee reports begin, the board can no longer accept questions from the floor. At the conclusion of the committee reports, public comments will once again be accepted. However, official action on those issues listed on the agenda will already take place. Therefore, if you wish to comment on an agenda item now would be the appropriate time. Okay, we will go into our committee reports. And I will start as the chairman of the Public Safety Committee. I just have one announcement this evening. On February twenty-fifth, the Board of Commissioners was informed by Defense Counsel that its petition for a rehearing on bunk in the matter of Fraternal Order of Police Pennsylvania Lodge at Al versus Springfield Township at Al was denied by the United States Court of Appeals for the Third Circuit. The board has reached a consensus that it will not be moving forward with any further appeals. The board appreciates the positive and productive relationship that is maintained with the individual and collective members of the police department throughout the appeals process and looks forward to collaborating with the department toward a greater Springfield Township. That concludes my report. We will now go to the Chairman of the Community Development Committee and our senior member, Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a report tonight about the Planning Commission. I'm pleased to, actually, it's a motion. I move that the Board of Commissioners appoint Allison Pottage of Orland to fill an unexpired vacancy as a member of the Springfield Township Planning Commission. Ms. Pottage, term of service shall expire February the sixteenth, twenty twenty-nine. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? I would just highlight, you know, once again, when we have these positions open in a lot of our advisory commissions, the, the talent that comes forward to throw their hat in the ring, to, to serve in those volunteer capacities is, is just a great resource and that we have for the township.
And, and we had, I'll just add that we had four excellent candidates, and we would encourage them to look for other opportunities when they present themselves at the township or went to township.
Great, thank you. So all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. We'll now go to the Chairman of the Administrative Fiscal Affairs and Zoning Committee, Commissioner Cobb.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regarding the bill listing for the month, I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the February check reconciliation in the amount of six hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars and ninety-three cents, and the March bill listing in the amount of five hundred and forty-one thousand, two hundred and seventy-one dollars and twenty-four cents. That's my motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? Is any of that in Bitcoin?
Not this month.
Good. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
All right. And regarding the zoning hearing board for the month of March, the Springfield Township Zoning Hearing Board will meet on Monday, March twenty-fourth at seven o'clock in this building where they will receive the following testimony on the following single application from Mrs. Jory Davis, owner of the property located at five oh five Willow Grove Avenue in Windmore. The applicant is seeking a variance to have a recently installed six-foot-high fence remain as currently erected on the front property line. As per the requirement of the zoning, township zoning ordinance, the fence was required to step back fifteen feet from the front property line, and that property is zoned within the A Residential District of Ward Five of the township. Copies of that application packets are available for review in the Community Development Office during normal business hours. And again, that application will be heard at this month's zoning hearing board meeting on Monday, the twenty-fourth at seven o'clock. That's my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Cobb. We now go to the Chairwoman of the Parks and Recreational Resources Committee, Commissioner Ratzaba.
Thank you, Mr. President. I officially don't have a report, but I did want to just send a shout out to the Walnut Lane Committee and the architects who have presented. They presented this fabulous three D model that was just excellent and, and interesting. It engaged a lot of residents at our last open house. The next open house is on April second. I encourage all those with interest in that property to come on out and to not take away that we have many projects going on, including the rec center meetings, which are regularly taking place also monthly. So just a reminder, everyone, that there is a lot going on in parks and recreation, and we invite you to come. That is my report.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Ratzba. Quick question. How many people would assume came to that open house?
I would say forty to fifty people.
Great. Thank you. We'll now go to the Chairman of the Environmental Resources Committee, Commissioner May.
Thank you. I'll begin with the recycling report. During the month of February twenty twenty-five, Springfield Township residents recycled one hundred thirty-eight point two eight tons of material with a household participation rate of seventy-five point eight percent. The net cost for the month was twelve thousand, nine hundred seventy dollars and fifty-two cents. Then the next is a reminder. The Board of Commissioners would like to remind residents that single-use plastic bags are not suitable for recycling as part of the township's curbside recycling collection program. In addition, plastic bags and liners should not be used to place recyclables out for collection by the township crews. Plastic bags slow the sorting process speeds at material recovery facilities, which increases processing costs paid by the township. Residents are encouraged to recycle their plastic bags at drop-off locations presently found at the local Acme and Giant supermarkets, and to avoid placing their materials out for collection using plastic can liners. That is my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner May. We'll now go to the Chairwoman of the Public Works and Facilities Committee, Commissioner McNamara.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two motions and an announcement this evening. The first is regarding the twenty twenty-five highway resurfacing project. I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the advertisement of public bids for the township's twenty twenty-five highway resurfacing program. A total of fifteen streets are proposed to be milled and resurfaced in twenty twenty-five at an estimate cost of four hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and three dollars. To the extent that bids are more or less than estimated, the potential exists to subtract or add streets in accordance with the bid specifications. Copies of the bid specs for the project along with the complete list of streets to be resurfaced are, are available in the office of the Township Manager. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? I would like to recognize we have our distinguished Public Works Director, Ian Hammer, in the audience. I'm sure you put a lot of work into this, too. Thank you for being here. He's always very involved with township above and beyond. So, thank you. Any other questions or comments? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
The second motion is regarding a pedestrian ramp at Stettin and Wissickan Avenue. I move that the Board of Commissioners accepts a proposal from Bowman Consulting Group to provide engineering design services for an ADA-compliant pedestrian ramp on the southeast corner of Setton Avenue and Wissickan Avenue. The terms of the engagement shall be in accordance with the proposed date of March fourth, proposal date, excuse me, March fourth, twenty twenty-five, and shall be billed on an hourly basis for a total fee not to exceed sixteen thousand, five hundred dollars. Instruction of the ramp shall be accomplished by Montgomery County as part of the extension to the Wissickan Green, Wissickan Green Ribbon Trail or Mount St. Joseph's Academy as part of a pending land development application. That is my motion.
The motion is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments?
Quick question for Mike. Outside of later this year, any sense of of when construction might?
That's the best I can do is later this year. As Tim reported on Monday night, they're allegedly apt to bid for the project. So depending upon the contractor's schedule and how the bids are returned, I expect that they're ready to go forward with it.
And has the county indicated anything to you as far as doing the trail along Stettin initially and then doing this intersection?
We have no idea what they're
All at the same time.
The, the construction phasing is going to look like, whether it'll start at one end and then work their way down, or whether they're going to have multiple crews out at one time. We're, we're not aware of that.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Great. And the last item is just an announcement that the Shade Tree Committee is working on programming and organizing arts free giveaway for Arbor Day, which is at the end of April on April twenty-sixth, and when we have details, it will be available on the website.
Great. Thank you.
That is my report.
Thank you, Commissioner McNamara. We'll now go to the Chairman of the Cultural Resources Committee, Commissioner Morris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no official report, but the Cultural Resources Committee would like to acknowledge Mr. Craig Lloyd for his perseverance in resubmitting a technology grant to the state which enabled the library to purchase technology equipment that will be used for the banking library. So, thank you, Mr. Lloyd.
Great. Thank you, Craig.
I have no, that concludes mine on you.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Morris. I thought your report was just fine. Let's see. Now we are done our committee reports. The board is once again open to receiving public comment. You can form a single line at the microphone. Okay, hearing done. I will accept a motion, adjourn the meeting. So moved. Your motion is there a second? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Please record a unanimous vote. We are adjourned. Phil Phils.